Meeting to order, please. Supervisor Collins, would you lead us in invocation?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, once again, you bless us with more snow and ice. I ask that you look over those that have to be on the roads this coming night and day, and for those who don't have to be on the roads, that still choose to be on the roads, please look after them and keep them safe. And as always, please give this board the guidance necessary to properly lead and direct this great county of Frederick. In your name we pray, amen.
Vice Chairman DeHaven, would you lead us in pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adopt you the agenda, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one addition, which would be to add a declaration of emergency resolution as item number four under county officials.
Is that all?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the revised agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor DeHaven is our second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion? Hearing on all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tabs. Tab E, which is the Public Safety Communications or Public Safety Committee Report, and also, after consulting with Mr. Lofton, Tab K, which is the waiver on the tower.
All right. We have a motion to have Tab E and K on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Any discussion? Hearing on all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Citizen comments. Mr. Rowley, did anyone sign up?
No, sir.
Board of Supervisors, comments, are there any? All right, we'll move on to the minutes. Budget work session and Finance Committee, January 15, 2014.
Chairman, may for approval, is submitted.
We have a motion by Supervisor DeHaven to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion? Hearing on all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the budget work session with the Finance Committee, January 15, 2014, are approved. We'll move on to the work session with the School Board, January 22, 2014.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Fisher to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion? Hearing on all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the work session with the School Board, January 22, 2014, are approved. And last, the regular meeting, January 22, 2014.
Move for approval, is submitted.
We have a motion by Supervisor Lofton to approve and a second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion? Hearing on all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the regular meeting, January 22, 2014, are approved. Next, we have a presentation, historic plaque presentation, Irisen Springs Farm. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a historic plaque award number 33 for the Irisen Spring Farm. Now, this property, the farm is a late 18th century Quaker farm. It has a main dwelling, kitchen, and smokehouse and springhouse that all represent late 18th century, early 19th century architecture in the region and retain a high degree of historic integrity. Also, the circa 1880 barn and former blacksmith shop and shed represent continuity of an agricultural tradition in the region, and they also retain their historic integrity. There are also two stone structures that appear to predate the French and Indian War, and one has what's called shooting slots seen in the structure referred to as forts. Now, the Historic Resource Advisory Board discussed this historic plaque application at their December meeting, and they did approve the plaque application. These are some pictures that were also included in the agenda of the property. As you can see, the main dwelling, as well as some of the outbuildings. So with that, the Historic Resource Advisory Board requests that the Board of Supervisors award the plaque to the property owners who are here tonight, Mr. David and Kathy Holliday. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? And I guess it's my pleasure to go down front. Ask the Hollidays to come forward. I trust you can find a worthy construction fellow to attach.
(laughter)
Good.
Thank you.
You're going to hold it together. Technology Committee, you have before you some information on my appointment to bring up to full speed the Technology Committee, Mr. Lauren Sutton. No action required, but I want you to know. MPO Advisory Committee, I think we have some names and works.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you had an idea, get it in there fast because we're working on something. We don't mind thinking about more than one thing. Next is the Planning Commission, Opeckin. Supervisor Wells tells me that he has a nominee, and he thought he got the form in, but it didn't make it to the agenda in the packet today, so I'll let you speak.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I had submitted the application of Robbie Molden of Middletown to serve on our Planning Commission, to take the vacant seat for the Opeckin District. They just didn't get on the agenda, and I'd like to...
So Supervisor Wells told me he's easy on the matter. You can wait till you have his form. You can approve it tonight if you want, and what's your pleasure? Are you ready to make, have a motion? Does anybody have a problem? You do not have the form, but he is around somewhere. I think he should make a motion.
I would move that Robbie Molden be appointed to the Planning Commission from the Opeckin District.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion? And I assume we can distribute the form later. Hearing on all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Is it, was it Molden, what was his first name?
Robbie.
Robbie Molden is hereby appointed to the Planning Commission from the Opeckin District. Next is the Community Policy and Management Team. I believe we're waiting on a recommendation. Correct, Mr.?
That's correct.
Moving on, the Economic Development Authority, formerly called the Industrial Development Authority, the Opeckin District representative was Bev Shoemaker. I don't know if we've got...
She has agreed to remain.
Okay. Is that a motion?
That, I would be happy to make that a motion, that Bev Shoemaker be appointed, reappointed to her position.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Wells. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
Will this be for the regular four-year term since we're transitioning from an EDA to an EDA?
It have to be. Mr. Rowley, an opinion?
Based on the conversations that we had at the EDA last committee authority meeting, it may be more appropriate to appoint Mrs. Shoemaker to serve through the end of this fiscal year, and then when the board member is officially designated as the appointee, we can revisit the appointments to the EDA, if that is okay.
That's fine with me. Yeah, I'm sure that would be fine. We discussed that, and I told her I did not have an answer for her on that as far as...
So we'll consider your motion amended?
Amended.
Yes, sir.
Fisher?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that'd be fine.
Any other discussion? Hearing on all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Beverly Shoemaker is hereby reappointed to the Economic Development Authority through the end of this fiscal year. Historic Resources Advisory Board, Red Bud, do we have one?
Negative.
Sir.
And that's it. Next is a request from the Commissioner of Revenue for refunds. Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first one, the Commissioner or the county attorney is in receipt of the Commissioner's request to authorize the Treasurer to refund Stuart M. Perry Incorporated the amount of $18,741.60 for personal property taxes for 2011, 12, and 13. As owner of personal property at Rock Harbor Golf Course, this portion of the personal property is assessed as daily rental and should not be charged personal property taxes. The Commissioner has verified that the items are being taxed as daily rental. Please note that the misspelling of the name Stuart on the Commissioner's memo, the correct spelling is accurate on the memo per the State Corporation Commission's records and the county tax records. And pursuant to Title 58.1 of the Code of Virginia, the county attorney does hereby note his consent. The board will also need to act on the request for approval of a supplemental appropriation as indicated in the Commissioner's memorandum.
Questions? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have made for approval, as well as a supplemental appropriation.
We have a motion to approve and to provide the supplemental appropriation. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
The second item, Mr. Chairman, is the county attorney is in receipt of the Commissioner's request dated February 3, 2014, to approve a refund for Wheel Two Wheel Promotions, V A L L C, in the amount of $4,383.37 for the adjustment to business license filings for 2011 and 12. This refund resulted from misclassification of receipts and not as return of revenue. Furthermore, no money will be refunded to Wheels Two Wheels Promotion, Virginia, LLC, because additional business license for 11 and 12 in excess of this refund is being assessed. Pursuant to the provisions of Title 58.1 of the Code of Virginia as amended, the county attorney hereby notes his consent. The Board of Supervisors will also need to act on the request for approval of a supplemental appropriation as indicated in the Commissioner's memorandum.
Questions? It's a little different than usual. Supervisor Lofton?
Would the motion to approve also have to be a motion to request the supplemental appropriation since there will be no supplemental appropriation?
That's a request for supplemental appropriation, but not for a refund.
Okay.
Everyone clear? Okay, I'm waiting for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have made for approval of supplemental appropriation.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor DeHaven. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Mr. Rowley?
The third item, Mr. Chairman, is the county attorney is in receipt of the Commissioner's request dated February 3, 2014, to authorize the Treasurer to refund a taxpayer the amount of $5,744.85 for 2011, 12, and 13 real estate taxes based on proper filing of proof of 100% permanent and total disability directly due to military service as required by the Code of Virginia, a change as a result of the constitutional amendment that took effect in 2011. The taxpayer's name cannot be made public because of the applicable legal requirements as to privacy, what is known to the Commissioner, the Treasurer, and the county attorney on a confidential basis. Pursuant to provisions of Section 58.1 of the Code of Virginia, the county attorney hereby notes his consent, and the Board of Supervisors will also need to act on the request for approval of a supplemental appropriation as indicated in the Commissioner's memorandum.
Questions for Mr. Rowley? The chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of this and a supplemental appropriation.
All right, Supervisor Lofton makes a motion to approve the refund and supplemental appropriation. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Is that it, Mr. Rowley?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next on the agenda is the resolution on local emergency. Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Normally, these resolutions are requested board action after the event occurs, and it's ratification of a local declaration by, in this case, the Deputy Director of Emergency Management, which is yours truly. The timing on this particular resolution is that we are anticipating a significant winter event that should commence sometime later this evening and end sometime late Thursday night, early Friday morning, and we are asking the board to declare a local emergency. The purpose of the resolution, if enacted, allows the staff to work through particular situations, particularly procurement, without having to go through the normal procedures to procure goods and services in an emergency basis. And I would respectfully request that the board endorse the resolution of a local declaration of emergency.
Questions of Mr. Rowley? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the declaration of local emergency as presented.
We have a motion to approve by Supervisor Wells. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion? Hearing on all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The resolution is unanimously passed. Next, we'll move on to Lake Holiday Dam Working Group. Mr. Chairman, are you doing that?
Mr. Chairman, the Lake Holiday Sanitary District Dam Working Committee, and I want to be careful about how I say that, that was not intended to be derogatory, met on January 28 and received an update on the status of the spillway project, which you know was completed last spring. Also, the staff briefed the committee on the collections and debt service, and after considerable discussion, although there was no formal motion made, it was the consensus of those present that the current rates of $678 for buildable lots and $264 for membership lots should be left in place for the budget for the next fiscal year, and I would so move.
Let's meet, pause for a minute, see for questions first.
Okay.
Questions? Now the motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Any discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. That conclude the report?
Yes, sir.
Next is a public hearing on 12-month outdoor festival permit request of Groves Winchester Harley-Davidson. Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a 12-month outdoor festival permit requested by Groves Winchester Harley-Davidson, and this is pursuant to Frederick County Code, Chapter 86, Festivals. This, again, is for a 12-month period, all events to be held on the grounds of Groves Winchester Harley-Davidson, 140 Independence Drive, Winchester, Virginia, property owned by Joba Lee LLC. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is present.
Did the applicant wish to speak?
Representing Joba Lee LLC and Groves Winchester Harley-Davidson, I'm Jeanette Dillon, and we'd just like to thank you for supporting our endeavors and helping the community with our events, and we appreciate that.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Leva Shashani?
Yes, sir, and I just, again, compliment them on the way they conduct their festivals there.
Excuse me, just a moment.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Rowley. This is a public hearing. So we'll open the public hearing to consider a 12-month outdoor festival permit request of Groves Winchester Harley-Davidson pursuant to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 86, Festivals, Section 86.3, Permit Required, Application, Issuance or Denial of Fee, Paragraph D, 12-month permits, all events to be held on the grounds of Groves Winchester Harley-Davidson, 140 Independence Drive, Winchester, Virginia, property owned by Joba Lee LLC. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this 12-month outdoor festival permit request? Seeing no, we'll close the public hearing. Now, Mr. Fisher.
Again, Mr. Chairman, these events at this facility are always run in an excellent manner, so I'd like to move for approval of the 12-month outdoor festival permit request of Groves Winchester Harley-Davidson.
We have a motion to approve by Supervisor Fisher. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the 12-month outdoor festival permit is approved. Next is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155, Taxation. Mr. Rowley, is that you?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I will introduce the subject, and then we'll probably defer to the county attorney for any questions. This is an ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 25, Taxation. The purpose of these proposed amendments is to conform the county code to subsequent changes in the Virginia code, to include a corresponding provision for business license tax applicable to wine wholesalers, to eliminate the vendor business license requirement for vendors with business licenses issued by the town of Middletown or the town of Stevens City, and to add a provision for the Commissioner of the Revenue to require submission of subcontractor list by contractors. Again, I would be more than happy to answer any questions or defer to the county attorney.
Does the county attorney have anything he wants to add before questions?
No, sir, that description covers it.
Are there questions? All right, then we'll go to public hearing. See if I can wade through this. This is a public hearing. On an ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155, Taxation, Article 7, Retail Sales Tax, Sections 155-32, Administration and Collection, Article 8, Tax on Purchases of Utility Services, Section 155-35, Local Users Fee, Article 16, Business License Provisions, Section 155-96, License Fee and Tax, Section 155-100, Itinerant and Distressed Merchandise Vendors, and to enact a new Section 155-113, Contractor to Provide List of Subcontractors as Part of Article 16, and to repeal Article 12, Home Heating Oil Local Option Sales and Use Tax, Section 155-47, Tax Imposed. The purpose of these proposed amendments is to conform the county code to subsequent changes in the Virginia code to include a corresponding provision for business license tax application to wine wholesalers, to eliminate the vendor business license requirements for vendors with business licenses issued by the town of Middletown or the town of Stevens City, and to add a provision for the Commissioner of the Revenue to require the submission of subcontractor list by contractors. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance? Seeing no, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Under Code Section 155-35, Local User Fee, A, and E911, Local User Fee to each Verizon Telephone Company, should that cover all telephone companies, or is it just specific to Verizon?
It actually covers two Verizon and Shintel for the next page for the Star Tannery area.
Right.
But those are the only two listed.
Right. The reason I ask you that, I'm going through my phone bills, and AT&amp;T also charges that E911 fee, so I just wonder if this was something specific to Verizon.
I don't believe that it is, and that's probably a change we should look at making in the future. When this change came up, it was obviously to make the change to the code site there, but, Mr. Lofton, it's an excellent point that, obviously, there are more than just those two providers today. And we can certainly put that on a list for future.
Well, we should be able to act on this with reference to the applicable phone companies in Frederick County.
I think that's a fair...
With that wording. I tried to ask some questions on that same issue today and didn't do anything but confuse myself.
Perhaps instead of Verizon Telephone Company in A, it should say...
There was some discussion today when I talked to some people that people choose long-distance vendors, but the actual provider might be Verizon, and I got lost after that. And so I think it's a good question, but it might be right.
I think there are other providers today. I honestly, as we sit here tonight, obviously haven't looked into it to ascertain it with certainty. It doesn't seem that there would be harm in the ordinance in covering any and all providers because I think the fee does flow through regardless of who the provider is.
Would be a good way to be accurate, to amend it like that?
I think so. For each...
Could you just drop Verizon?
I guess we could simply say small L, Local Telephone Company, user, instead of Verizon Telephone Company there. That's probably about the best we can do as far as making it general.
Okay, other questions? Supervisor Lofton, you want to take a shot at this?
Yes, sir. I move to...
Again, with county attorney's blessing, I don't think it's a change in the advertisement, but a clarification.
All right, then I'll go back to...
Editorial.
Covers, okay. I will move to approve the ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155, Taxation, and all the applicable subchapters of that section that need to be changed, if that's appropriate.
That works.
All right, everyone understand the motion, or do you need more clarification?
Mr. Chairman, should a note with the applicable editing as provided by the county attorney?
I think that's an order. Is the county attorney and the parliamentarian agree?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay, again.
I don't know whether it's appropriate to do it after the fact, but can we verify at some point from some source that we've taken the right course with regard to not naming phone companies or the language that we use? Or might we want to consider bringing that section back since it wasn't proposed as part of the amendment?
We have a motion that meets muster with county attorney. I'm searching for a second, and then we can go to discussion.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
All right, I have a second. Now, discussion. Supervisor Hess raises the issue as it's ready to vote on or not. Obviously, the easiest way to deal with that would be to deny the motion and ask for it to be brought back. Or...
I certainly don't have any problem with what was presented to us for its amendment. I don't know whether the section on the...
I think, I think under our rules of order, an editorial is okay, and I think if Mr. Williams runs into more than that, I don't think he'll do anything. He'll bring it back.
Okay.
But I don't know if that's good enough.
That's fine.
Mr. Williams, is that...
That, that works.
The other discussion. All right, then we'll vote. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next, an ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code to repeal Chapter 112, Massage Parlors and Health Clubs in its entirety. Who's doing that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The purpose of this proposed amendment is to eliminate an ordinance rendered unnecessary by subsequent changes to the Virginia code and regulation undertaken at the state level. So it is a repeal of that section.
Any questions of Mr. Rowley? If not, then we'll conduct a public hearing on an ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code to repeal Chapter 112, Massage Parlors and Health Clubs in its entirety. The purpose of this proposed amendment is to eliminate an ordinance rendered unnecessary by subsequent changes in the Virginia code and regulations undertaking at the state level. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I would like to move to approve the ordinance amendment to repeal Chapter 112 Massage Parlors and Health Clubs in its entirety from county code.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing done. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Next is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155 Taxation, Article 25 Exemption for Nonprofit Organizations. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The purpose of this amendment would to fully reflect the 2003 state law amendments in which the General Assembly gave authority to localities to grant new tax exemptions. In the county code, this includes a proposed new triennial application procedure. All tax-exempt nonprofit organizations in the county would be required to make such application. Based on the responses received, the Board of Supervisors could elect to revoke one or more board-granted exemptions, as well as request the General Assembly to repeal any pre-2003 General Assembly exemptions.
Questions, Mr. Riley? Seeing no one, we'll go to public hearing. This is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155 Taxation, Article 25 Exemption for Nonprofit Organizations, Section 155-153 Property Exempted from Taxation by Designation. The purpose of this proposed amendment is to conform the county code to corresponding Virginia code provisions in connection with the 2003 General Assembly delegation of tax-exempt designations to localities, and to delete references to specific exemptions as the list is not complete and need not be set out in the county code. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance to amend? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval of the ordinance amendment.
By Supervisor Collins, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing done. We'll vote. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Next on the agenda, Master Development Plan 01-14 Snowden Bridge. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This master development plan is a proposal to develop about 364 acres of land. Of that, the revision applies to 158 acres. That is all zoned R4 Residential Plan Community District with a total of 1,234 units. Now, the units consist of a mix of single-family townhouse and multifamily. Now, the previous master plan for Snowden Bridge was reviewed by the Planning Commission back in 2012 and the board in January of 2013. Now, the revisions contained under this master plan revision pertain mainly to the road network, as well as the housing types within the undeveloped portion of Land Bay 3. This is a map of the property. It was included in your agenda. Now, the entire land holdings are outlined in black. And then this is the main sheet from the master plan that shows the proposed project, the road layout, as well as it labels all the housing types. Now, with this master plan application, the applicant is requesting a waiver of a now-required residential separation buffer. Now, the RP district changes that were approved back in January of 2013 introduced a requirement for a buffer between multiplex units and single-family units, regardless of the zoning district classification, whereas previously only buffers were required between RP and RP properties. So now the buffer is based on the adjacent housing types. Now, if I can scroll back to this, the area that we're talking about for the waiver is located in this bottom portion of the property. Now, the zoning ordinance requires a Category B buffer as the residential screening element between the proposed multiplex units, which are located on Carseridge Court, you have to excuse me if I said that wrong, and Halo Terrace, and the existing residential properties that front Jordan Springs Road. Now, the ordinance states that a waiver can be granted if the topography of the lot providing the buffer yard and the lot being protected is such that the required buffer yard would not be effective. Now, the applicant did provide some details showing the existing properties on Jordan Springs, as well as the elevation difference between those units and the proposed multiplex. Now, the existing residential structures on Jordan Springs sit much higher than the proposed multiplex proposed within the Snowden Bridge development. And the applicant, as they stated, prepared a couple of different areas that show the difference. So while the master plan before you tonight is presented as an informational item, we are seeking a decision from the Board of Supervisors on the requested waiver. I would note that the Planning Commission recommended approval of the waiver at their February 5 meeting. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and Mr. Evan Wyatt is here on behalf of the application.
Somewhere in the presentation materials, there was a statement to the effect that the developer had offered, contacted the homeowners and offered to build a buffer if they wanted it. Will the approval of the waiver, does that go away? Or is that offer still out there and will remain out there? What's the status of that?
I would have to defer that to the applicant, because that wasn't a county initiative. We haven't been involved in that.
Any questions, the staff? Thank you. Who, does the applicant wish? You got your first question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Evan Wyatt with Greenway Engineering. The, I guess I'm gonna find it here somewhere. There we go. The waiver that's in question this evening, as Candace said, is for the lower part of the site. And the exhibits that you see here demonstrate the relationship between the existing residential units. Here's this cross-section is representative of this, this section of this, and then down here, Section 3 for that. And what we did, we reached out to all the property owners that have lots, whether they're developed lots or not along this run. We forwarded letters to all of them. Basically, the letters advised them of what we were seeking. It had the same information that you see. And what we also told them was two things. Number one, because this was important for them back when we did the rezoning, that we would still make sure that the easements were there along our perimeter to allow for future connectivity to water and sewer, because that was very important to them at that point in time. And then the second thing was that if they were interested and they were willing to give us an easement to do so, the landscaping that we would normally put down here, which would not be effective, we would be glad to meet with them if they would give us an easement and do the plantings up higher on their property, if that was a desire. We sent out, we sent out nine letters. We actually received calls from two of the citizens. They were supportive of what we were doing. Their main interest, though, was future connectivity to water and sewer. But I reminded them, if they did desire, we'd be happy to work with them on landscaping. So...
So the offer still stands and will?
It would stand throughout the development of that section, sure.
Did you have anything else you wanted to present?
No, nothing else, but I'll be happy to answer questions.
Questions, the applicant. Very, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a waiver request before you?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval of the waiver as requested.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Any discussion? Hearing done. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those know, the waiver request is approved. Second is a Master Development Plan 0214 of Dune Bag. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Subdivision. Go ahead.
Again, thank you. This is another revised master plan. This development is a 25-single-family small development on 4.78 acres of land. Now, the original master plan for this property was approved back in 2012. Now, the property is located on Apple Valley Road in the Back Creek District. If you look to the screen to your left, the property is outlined in black. And you see the portion at the bottom shows where Apple Valley Road is. This is the master development plan for the property. It shows a similar layout to what was approved in 2012. It shows the same road layout. Now, the main revision to this is the addition of one residential lot, as well as the elimination of a residential separation buffer. Now, the residential separation buffer was eliminated with the RP updates back in January of last year. Now, while the revised plan does show the removal of the buffer, the applicant will be retaining the existing fence along the northern property line, which is shown on the master plan. Also, another note is that all the waivers that were approved with the 2012 master plan are still in place. So tonight, this master plan is presented as an informational item. I would be glad to answer any questions. And again, Evan Wyatt is here on behalf of the application.
Questions, the staff? Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
All right, next is a discussion on the 2014-2015 Capital Improvements Plan. Mr. Reddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board supervisors. It's that time of year again, of course. The 2014-2015 CIP is here as a discussion item tonight for the Board of Supervisors. As we get started, I recognize a few familiar faces in the crowd, if you will, from the different county departments and agencies who are here to answer any questions that you may have regarding their components of this year's CIP. It was presented to the Comprehensive Plans Committee earlier, excuse me, a few months ago, which was late 2013. The committee, of course, recognized the plan's consistency with the comprehensive plan. They forwarded a recommendation to that extent onto the Planning Commission. Planning Commission held their discussion recently, and of course, it's forwarded here to us for additional discussion. There are 92 projects in this year's CIP. It's a few more than last year. Basically, it's just a reorganization on a couple of the department's parts. Parks and Recreation have done some reorientation, as has the airport. It continues to make sure that all our planning documents, if you will, work together. The CIP, the comprehensive plan. Of course, that helps us with rezoning applications, development impact model, things of that nature. We're not going to go into all of the details, but suffice to recognize on the screen, of course, is one of the major components, and that's the table that identifies all of the different projects. Schools being the example that are highlighted here. There are three pages to that table with all of the individual requests highlighted. It's supported by four maps that identify the general facilities, schools, parks and recreation, and finally, the fourth one being transportation. The CIP also includes a narrative description of all of the different projects. Couple of items that have moved off from previous years. Schools, of course, are moving forward with the all-day kindergarten, so that has come off. Public Works has recently completed and opened the Gainesboro Citizens Convenience Center. Of course, we have a new runway out at the airport. New and modified projects, one that is part of the amended CIP from last year, of course. County Administration in Schools. The Joint Administration Building is reflected both in the schools component and on the county administration side of things. Parks and Recreation wanted me to again recognize that many of their changes in orientation are reflective of the public survey and input effort that they went through last year. And you will notice that the transportation one has been modified slightly. It's been broken down into funded and unfunded projects. Of course, that's in recognition of those projects that are funded in the county's six-year Road Improvement Plan. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board of Supervisors may have. And again, to recognize the department and county entities that are here this evening also to be available for any questions you may have.
Questions, the staff?
I'm not sure whether this is a question of staff, or perhaps Supervisor DeHaven can help me with that. The arrangement for the Clearbrook Park, in terms of that park, now that parkland is not owned by us. Is that great or part of it?
That's correct.
And what's the terms of that, in terms of investments we might be making in that park? And what time we, you know, what timeframe we might have to, if ever, vacate that?
The portion where the ballfields are in front of the convenience site is the portion that you're asking about. The rest of the park, we own. And I honestly do not recall what the terms are. It was a long-term agreement. Can anyone help?
I can find that later. That's...
That there are discussions ongoing currently with Carmouche with reference to provision of alternative lands to replace the ballfields. And once all of that information has been solidified, we will be back and reporting to the board through Public Works with reference to its status. But we are aware of it, and information is being shared by both parties.
Questions? I must admit, I got caught again on this one. When I read the Public Facilities Component Amendment, it did not say what I thought it would say after having talked with Mr. Riley last week. And I haven't had a chance to sort that out yet.
The following item...
Was looking for something that was more generic than, I was trying to find the words here. Really thought I'd see something that made it counting facilities anywhere in the county more than in designated areas. And what I read seemed to say designated areas, and I just haven't had time to sort those pieces out yet.
Yeah, and I believe you're, the Community Facilities Component, which is a separate item. That would be the next discussion item. Of course, the two are hand in hand, and that's why we brought them together.
Excuse me. I have jumped a gun on you.
That's okay. I'm prepared now for the next item.
I'm trying to push too hard, I guess. Is it still snowing? The request is to whether this is ready for public hearing?
Yes, sir.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
To move.
All right, we have a motion to send to public hearing. Supervisor Lofton, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing done. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those know, off we go. Next item.
Thank you. So of course, this says a proposed amendment to the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, which does indeed deal with public facilities in the Comprehensive Plan. Following our CIP amendment last year, following all of the discussion we had on the joint county facility for schools and public administration. This was initiated through the Planning Commission and Comprehensive Plans Committee, again, to try and capture what was already in various parts of the Comprehensive Plan, put it in one logical location to promote community facilities here in the county, to promote their general accessibility and improving those, continuing to improve those resources. We did have some discussion at the Planning Commission, who were in support of it. We are here getting some guidance, of course, from the Board of Supervisors. It is very straightforward that it does, of course, mirror the Comprehensive Plan as it is today. It provides some narrative as to where the future would lie and provides a basic policy, which is to improve services to the citizens of Frederick County through the efficient and effective provision of community facilities. And there are several implementation concepts that are listed, which deal with general location and accessibility. And again, it was something that was discussed through the Planning Commission and Plan Committee as a response to the discussion we had last year to hopefully further the discussion on general community facilities in Frederick County. And again, it's a first attempt, so we'd be happy to take any input that the board may have in any direction at this time.
Well, then now I'll start. I kind of had it in my head that what we were trying to do was make it abundantly clear that irregardless of zoning, county facilities could, for county citizens, could be located anywhere in the county. And the wording that's here dances around that, and I'm not sure abundantly makes it clear, but maybe we didn't want to. Maybe I'm confused on what our goal was. But if our goal was to do that, I think there's some language here that can be misinterpreted.
And I believe you're talking about perhaps one of the implementation steps that guides the location should generally be located within urban areas, which may include the county's urban development area and potential urban centers. So, you know, of course, there are many community facilities that are located in there.
And you know, there's a whole lot better way to say that if we're trying to say they'll go where, we want them to go where they're needed, I think.
Point well taken.
Mr. Chairman? Supervisor Lofton? When we discuss this item, under Future Focus, it says, first paragraph, "Community facilities providing administrative and judicial services." I don't see that addressed under Policies Implementation. There's no judicial component there that I missed something. And do we want judicial in there?
Well, one would perhaps take the interpretation that administrative and judicial then were further limited to urban areas... were further limited to urban areas or urban centers. As some subcategorization of any kind of governmental facility. I, I'm troubled by what we're saying here and not saying.
So this chapter of the comprehensive plan, which is Chapter 6, public facilities, there's a great deal of discussion about public schools, a great deal of discussion about parks and recreation, the airport, fire and rescue services. So that exists for most of the entities in the county and describes broader locations throughout the county. The focus of this one was definitely more on the administrative side of things. But perhaps it is too tight. Perhaps it should be broadened up a little bit further, because I do certainly understand what you're saying, that there may be a case in the future for satellite locations, things of that nature elsewhere in the county.
Who is the best, who is best to propose what it is that we want to build where? Is that the board? Is that the Planning Commission? Would it be staff?
I would say it's a...
It's just not abundantly clear.
It's a collective interest, I think, there, and that's illustrated through the comprehensive plan, perhaps.
Make it more clear where would be the best place to start.
With direction from the board.
If other people share Mr. Lofton in my question. I think it's the same question.
Yeah, we're designating, we're saying shall be located in these areas. I think it's what you were talking about, right? Yeah.
Wordsmith this a little and share it with the board?
I'm searching for a path.
I think we can do that and share that with you at your next meeting to make sure that we're on target.
What's, what's the rest of you feel?
Good place to start.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Be happy to do that, yeah.
Appreciate it. I guess that's it for that.
That's it, thank you.
All right, board liaison reports, are there any? If not, citizen comment time. Are there any citizens here who would like to address the board on any topic? The senior will close the citizen comment portion meeting. Board of Supervisors comments, if I might lead. We received a letter from a local developer attorney to Supervisor Wells on private streets. Supervisor Wells would like that topic vented, especially since it was last maybe worked on when he wasn't here. I supported his request and the, and thought the Transportation Committee would be the best place for that to happen and see what they recommended. The chairman of Transportation Committee and staff would like the board to kind of say, do this, because it may be a subject that has previously been decided. And so I'm asking the board, if you support Mr. Wells and I, that you say so, and that we do something here, and a motion to refer to committee would be good.
I think it'd be a good idea to refresh, add, make that motion to send to Transportation Committee.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Lofton. Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Does that an orderly way to deal with staff and the committee chairman? Are we getting there?
Yeah.
What's the developer requesting?
I didn't really study the letter. Supervisor Wells may be able to speak to it if you'd like.
What's the basis?
Private streets in Shandau.
And the, there's subdivision down there in Shandau.
Okay.
Like Frederick.
Specific, but specific to that?
Yes.
Yes, specific to their, their subdivision.
Hearing now, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Anybody else on Board of Supervisors comments?
Would just remind the board that the Joint Finance Committing Meeting with the city is canceled tomorrow morning.
All right.
Chairman, move for adjournment.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Meeting adjourned.